I call to order the Maplewood City Council work session on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Mr. Reese, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley. Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Homer.
Here.
Mayor Kanapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
There.
Mayor Kanapper, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Crossley?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number four, Mr. Reese.
Charter discussion, municipal discussion, municipal court, in addition of city prosecutor and public defender.
Okay. All right, so I provided a memo to you all that is attached to the agenda. Councilmember Crossley has some questions that we can go over, but before we do, I just wanted to see if anyone on the call right now has any questions that they would like to ask.
I was curious, based on the email that I sent yesterday, if we have any reference, framework reference for the potential cost included. So that will probably be part of the discussion, but again, I just want to reiterate that I had a question about that yesterday.
Okay. So I responded to an email that asked that question and that the response is, we won't, we do not have any information about the cost, or there is no cost analysis for this right now, because I am still in a fact finding mode, if you will. I need to gather information. And to that end, I've been speaking with Attorney Graves about this, and I believe we will need to go before, or submit a letter to the Board of Professional Responsibility for the state to see if we can even do this. And so, in the memo that I provided to you all, I said that this, my goal would be to put this on the 2023 ballot in April. However, we won't be able to do that, because I know when we ask the Missouri Board of Professional Responsibility if this is possible, what we're discussing, it's going, it could possibly take them months to respond to us. So, need to state that, but there is no cost analysis at this time, because I need to get more information from you all before we can do that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what board does that have to go before?
The Missouri Board of Professional Responsibility.
Okay.
So your email had mentioned that you've already had conversations with Judge Miller, and indicated potentially how many hours or something like that. So, if you can share that as part of your conversation tonight, again, I think that will give us some references to potentially the cost impact without having an in-depth analysis.
So... I will answer that for you, but you, it won't, because we need to determine what duties these positions would have. And with those duties, that could affect the time. But with that being said, Judge Miller told me that they meet municipal court, will have session or be in session at least three times a month, maybe four. And then she said that when they, when court is in session, it's at least two hours. It could be three. So she said if they, they could start at 4:30 or 5 o'clock, and then court would be complete by 6:30, 7 o'clock.
So it sounds like sort of a minimum requirement, maybe you said two to three times a month, or two to three hours at a time?
Three, three to four, three to four times a month. Yes. All right. Any additional questions? Before I move on to Councilmember Crossley's. All right. So the first question that I see, city prosecutor position. One, related to the separation of the city attorney and city prosecutor, is the intent to expand the contract with Louis Rice to include an additional person, or to go through a separate contract to secure someone in a different firm? I am wondering which would be most cost effective. So, no, the intent is not to expand the contract. The intent is to have a separate contract with another person. And it could be a firm if the council would like to see that, or it could be an attorney, just one attorney, does not have to be a law firm. Two, well, let me just ask before I move on to the second question, any questions or discussion?
Well, I'm assuming that our city attorney and city prosecutor are still going to be one of the same.
No. So the intent is to separate those two positions, so they wouldn't be one of the same. They are right now, as you know, but the intent is to separate that, so you have two different people serving in two separate positions. All right. Number two, where does the city prosecutor fit in the existing organizational chart of the city's employees? Would they report to the city manager or someone else? So right now, the city prosecutor is the city attorney. And in the organizational chart, they are one of the same pursuant to the charter. Right now, what the city does is it hires Louis and Rice, the firm, and then from that firm, Louis and Rice can provide an attorney for the city prosecutor, and they can provide an attorney for the city attorney. So that person can either serve, so you can, you can have someone from Louis and Rice, like right now, Attorney Graves serves as our city attorney, then she also serves as our city prosecutor. But Louis and Rice could provide the city with a city prosecutor, so then Attorney Graves would just be our city attorney. Any questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, and so the city attorney reports to the city manager, right?
Yes, yes. All right, so now I'm going to move on to the city defender position. The first question, based on my reading of page 34 of the Ferguson Commission Report, I'm thinking this would be a separate contract with a different firm. Is that the case? Yes, that is the case. This would be a separate contract with a different law firm or an attorney? Again, it doesn't have, this person does not have to be a part of a law firm. Any questions or discussion? All right. Number, yes?
Can I just say one thing, which is that I'm not sure if everyone on the council knows, but it has been our intention, and we are, just, this is more just educational information, that the, there is another individual from my firm, his name is Thomas Selig, who is in training to take over as the prosecuting attorney, so that I'm not doing both duties. And that's under the existing contract. That's, the contract is with Louis Rice and provides for those services, so it meets the requirements of the charter.
All right. Number two, under city defender position, I am open to the defense of any, all who need it. Is there a way we can explicitly bring in an equity lens and consider income status for a public defender? Additionally, page 33 of the report calls out the need for public defenders for criminally charged children. Is it possible that we consider that option for, option a pilot for the implementation of this? That is a good question. I, I'm just going to say, yes, it is possible for us to consider it, but I'm, I am not going to be able to answer too much more.
I will weigh in very quickly that we don't.
Hold on, hold on, Jackie, hold on. Thank you. All right, so let me, let me back up. The part where I say I don't want to, I don't want to speak on is the defenders for criminally charged children. I think Jackie may respond to that, but let me go back to the first part, the first part of question number two. Is there a way we can explicitly bring in an equity lens and consider income status for a public defender? I'm, I'm not... I'm not sure if Councilmember Crossley is asking about an income status. Is she, I'm not sure if she's asking if we can see if people are considered indigent, or if she's asking about the public defender. If anyone has any, any idea. If Councilmember Crossley is asking about whether or not we can determine if someone is indigent, then yes, I, we can. And I think that it behooves us to ensure that we do have an indigency test, because we don't want to bog down this potential city defender or public defender. And as long as that person is serving the indigent, or folks that meet the indigency requirements, then they can, they can just be focused on a certain amount or number or group of folks, instead of possibly representing everyone. And then Attorney Graves, I believe you were going to speak on defenders of criminally charged children?
Only to let you all know that in the municipal court, we don't charge children. I mean, 16, 17-year-olds with traffic offenses or, but no, you know, if they're a child and being criminally charged, it's going to juvenile court.
Okay. All right. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Then number three, could we ask other municipalities if they would like to participate, so that we can do some cost sharing, similar to what we are doing with the social worker? Absolutely, absolutely. I don't have a problem asking if other municipalities would be interested in doing this, above to see municipalities get on board.
Is there a savings there? I don't fully understand how attorneys bill, but isn't it billed by their work, therefore, you know, they're working for Maplewood, we're getting billed for what, the work they're doing for us, and if they're working for Richmond Heights, they're getting billed separately for that? Is there, is there a advantage to be had there? And it's just my ignorance, apologies.
It may be my ignorance too, but I, I, I don't know, from, from what I'm looking at right now, and I will just admit to y'all, I have a tendency to have like, like blinders on when it comes to something that I'm working on and a goal that I have. So when I was looking at this initially for Maplewood, I'm looking at the amount of money that the city currently pays Louis and Rice to have a prosecutor in our courtroom. So to answer your question, Eric, I'm not sure if there is...
It's like a sum, it's not an hourly.
Yeah, it's a sum, it's not an hourly, it's a sum. And I'm not sure if there is a cost, cost sharing that we could do, but when we go into the cost analysis of it, I'll work with Attorney Graves, Michael, and our Director of Finance to see what can be done. All right. Any, anything, any questions or discussion on that question? All right. So I'm going to move on to municipal court in general. One, a critical part of the report is the perception, which sometimes is very real, of a conflict of interest among municipal judges who are serving in similar roles within the county. Since we are already considering amending this section of the charter, can we amend the charter to include an explicit prohibition of candidates for municipal judge who are already serving in a similar appointed role in St. Louis County? I will open that up for discussion. What are your thoughts? And you know what, before we talk about that, I will let you know, I spoke with a handful of attorneys that serve as municipal judges in different areas, or that serve as prosecutors in different municipalities. There's, there's even an attorney who provides training through... What is the, my mind is going blank. Oh, the Missouri Municipal League, the training that they provide to newly elected officials. I remember one of the trainers telling us that he served as a judge in different places. So I will, I will tell you all that what Councilmember Crossley has asked is very important. I appreciate her for bringing that forward out of the report, and I don't think that it would be impossible for us to find someone, excuse me, that would be okay with not serving anywhere else, but I will just tell you that it is a, a part of the legal culture, if you will, to serve as a prosecutor in different municipalities, or to serve as a judge in different municipalities.
I'm going to parade my ignorance again. What's the conflict of interest there? If you're serving as a county, county judge?
It's not a, there isn't, there, yeah, so there isn't a conflict, it's the perception. It's the perception that, well, you, you know everybody, and this is a good old boy club, because you're a prosecutor here and prosecutor there, yes.
And I'd say, just to add on to that, if you've read the Ferguson Commission Report, it's not so much that you're a prosecutor or a judge in multiple municipalities, it's that you're one in one municipality and something different in another. So you could be defending someone in one municipality, and then be, be sitting as a judge against that same defendant in another municipality. So there is definitely the potential for conflict of interest if you're serving in two different capacities in two different places, that might be adjacent to each other, or a mile away from each other.
I mean, to that end, the attorney has a duty to recuse themselves, like really, it's, it's the perception of that, right, that you are a judge there, but attorneys do have a requirement to recuse themselves when something is against our ethical rules. But what are your thoughts on that? Y'all, would you like to see that included?
I think I kind of share that the perception of a conflict of interest, I understand that, and I think could be an issue, but I just wonder what that does to the candidate pool potentially, if we rule out a whole subset of attorneys. I mean, if we could still find someone, I think, yeah, I mean, I am also concerned about Councilmember Crossley's, what she raises here, with the perception of the conflict. But as long as we don't rule everyone out, and we could still find someone, I think I would not be opposed to that.
So really, the conflict is that you're playing both sides. Could you just limit the limitation to say, rather than say you can't serve in two different jurisdictions, you can, but they have to be the same role. So if they're going to be a judge for us, they can't be a defendant, a, you know, a public defender elsewhere, because then, then you've got that potential conflict. Whereas I don't see a conflict if you're a judge here and a judge in, you know, Hazelwood, okay.
Okay. All right. I'm just taking notes.
I, sorry, I couldn't get my mute button off there. I don't... I mean, I don't, I know there's, there was a perception that was raised some concerns in the Ferguson Report, but I mean, it would seem to me that if we were to implement something like this, that it could be extraordinarily difficult to find a judge or prosecutor that would work, work for us, because I know a lot of them who are in municipal legal system, they do work a couple of different jobs. And if they're ethical attorneys, typically that wouldn't be a problem, but that would be a tough one to put on. You're putting a huge onus on any other future council to find somebody, and we need a judge, and we need a prosecutor, and a public defender. And I think if you limit it like this in St. Louis, I think you're gonna, you're asking for trouble. So that's my two cents.
Okay. All right, the last question we have is, I think a cost analysis is desperately needed. When we, when can we anticipate receiving this? That is a good question. All right, so before I answer that question, let me direct us to the memo that I sent. All right. So right now, we have an ordinance that provides for our municipal judge to appoint a public defender to someone that is charged with a crime. And Attorney Graves explained to me that in Missouri, there are crimes, and then there are quasi-crimes. So crimes are going to put a person at risk of losing their liberty, serving jail time, and then quasi, quasi-crimes are your offenses like driving without a license, driving on a suspended license. Is that correct, Attorney Graves?
Not quite, but it's the concept, you, you get the concept. Currently, and I think this is what you're saying, Mayor, so tell me to stop if this is not right, that under Missouri law and under our ordinances, there is a provision for a public defender. In order for those provisions to be triggered under Missouri law, and under Missouri law is what we would be talking about if it was being prosecuted by the state. In municipal court, it's prosecuted by the municipal prosecuting attorney. But in either instance, it's only triggered in, when the defendant is one, indigent, and two, subject to incarceration for the crime. So, for example, if they were caught assaulting someone, and the prosecutor was going to seek juvenile time, then the judge could appoint a public, and they had, and they were indigent, then the judge could appoint a prosecutor, or a public defender for that person.
If the penalty was financial, they potentially would not have the benefit of a defender?
That's right. There is no right to a public defender under Missouri law, unless you, unless your liberty is at stake.
So what I am proposing that we do is we have a public defender that serves people that meet the indigent, excuse me, indigent, ugh, y'all know what I'm trying to say. Thank you. Just, you know, they meet that requirement, and it does not matter that they are at risk of facing jail time. So we could have a public defender that defends someone that has a suspended license. So what I need to figure out from you all is, what would you like for that public defender to do? Because the duties of that public defender are going to affect the cost analysis. If we have a public defender that is, this public defender would sit in our municipal court full-time, like our city prosecutor, like our municipal judge, right, they would be there. And the public defender could do two things. They could continue pursuant to Missouri law to represent someone that meets the indigency test and is facing jail time. They would continue to do that. But they can also represent someone that has a ticket for driving without a license. So we can do that. Or the other option that I propose to you all to choose from is you can have a public defender that can give information, but not representation, for people that are charged with driving on a suspended license, or driving without a license. So they would not represent those folks, but they would continue to represent the people that are charged with a crime and facing jail time and meet the indigency requirements. So those are the two options. And then if someone has a third, then that's fine, but that's just what I, what I proposed to you all. Then depending on what you all are interested in, I can move forward with looking into a cost analysis.
Are there currently resources for someone to obtain that information? So from the perspective of providing information, are there currently resources out there through the county or through nonprofits that can, someone can be directed to through, say, our Human Services Commission, or the, our new Audrey's position? So that, I would think that if, if that's an option, then that's going to affect our choices.
Yeah, it seems to be on principle, if the purpose is to serve indigent defendants, then at the municipal level, is, I would assume most of the cases aren't, incarceration's not a, is that the most common penalty that people are facing? No. So if we, if we do this and we don't do the non-incarceration penalties, then we're not covering very many people, and I'm not sure what the point is. So I would be in favor of, of the, I guess that's option one.
Okay.
I think. I'm sorry, I'm
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Page, both criminal and quasi-criminal.
Okay.
I mean, that better fulfills sort of the spirit, I think, of what we're trying to do here. If you're indigent, you're the very person that can least face like a financial penalty, or something of that nature. But I don't know, you know, when you do the cost analysis, that could mean it's through the roof, because that includes, I'm sure, a giant raft of offenses.
Okay.
So can anyone answer my question about what resources are there currently?
I know that our Social Services Coordinator doesn't have that information right now. I'm not sure, outside of that, I know our Human Services Commission wouldn't touch on that either. And then as far as nonprofit organizations, I don't know. I don't know if legal services of Eastern Missouri touches on criminal matters. I believe they focus on civil matters, but I'm not sure. So then that would leave the public defender for the county, and that public defender is used, from my understanding, that public defender's office is used for And that public defender is used, from my understanding, that public defender's office is used for folks that are charged um, with crimes that, that would put you before the, the county court. But Attorney Graves, please, if you, if you, uh, have additional information.
They, yes, these types of organization, if you exist. Or just the most known one is Arch City Defenders, just as an example.
My take on that though is I, I don't like de- developing policy around an assumption that a nonprofit can come in and provide a service 100% of the time at exactly what, you know, like, I think if you want to build that in, you build it in. But, you know, assuming that a nonprofit's gonna provide something that we're basically saying is something that's essential, I think, I, I'm not in favor of that because it's, you know, that's something you don't control. What level of service a nonprofit provides, how long they provide it, the quality at which they provide it, all those things, you know, that can vary. It's nice that it's there, it's, it's a great catch. Um, and I'm very in favor of that kind of thing, but I, I wouldn't design policy around it, I don't think.
My question is not, is a nonprofit gonna fill this role? My question is, if there are nonprofits that also serve this community, um, to, and a, a certain extent, and to what extent is that service? And from there, the cost analysis would be, um, it would be relevant to the cost analysis. So without knowing what, um, what services are currently in place, then I think it's gonna be even more difficult to determine, um, what level of service needs to be provided by the city. So that's, that's where my question is, um, is, is targeted at, not, you know, are we, are we, um, passing this off to a nonprofit? So that, just to clarify.
No, and I, I wasn't taking it to mean that. That's what I'm saying, like, if you, if we're saying, well, because there are nonprofits to provide that information, we might need to provide it less and therefore it'll be less cost to us. I, I would assume, I would assume the worst. I would assume that that service isn't there in my budgeting because you don't, it's not something you own. Um, irrespective of, of y, y, you have to assume that that's not gonna be there. So you have to pay for it or at least be prepared to pay for it, one way or the other. Does that make sense? I'm, I'm stumbling here.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me. Me, I, I understand what you're saying. And I, and I, I have to agree that if, if we're gonna do a public defender, then it would be for, um, representation for indigent cases and potentially, uh, some, uh, some information and clarity on, on, um, of potential defendants, um, options. Um, in terms of, I guess, the quasi or whatever the other criminal one that it doesn't involve jail time and you're not indigent. I'm assuming that I'm reading that correctly, Mayor.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, unless Arch City decides that they're gonna publicly defend somebody, we're just gonna have to assume that we are.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, may I?
May I clarify or just, or maybe you could speak to the level of duties, whether it's a limited representation or actual representation as it relates to their questions on cost?
Yes. So, so the first part of me asking you, you know, which one do you choose? Was taking me to this next part, which is, um, when we are talking about the cost or, uh, yes, the cost of having a public defender, we also need to discuss their duties. And so I think what I would like to do, and I'd like to hear from you all, of course, but what I'd like to do is, um, first determine what the cost would be if the public defender had limited representation or provided limited representation to, um, someone that meets the income requirements. So limited representation could, could possibly look like negotiating for the defendant. Um, but then not representing the defendant in a hearing or, excuse me, in a trial. So for example, you have someone that has a ticket for driving without a license. The public defender would represent that person through negotiations, but if um, the public defend couldn't negotiate to a point where the defendant was going to accept the offer, then that would, that would be the end of that representation. So that's the limited representation of a defendant. And then the full representation of the defendant would mean that, that, that public defender would represent that person through negotiations and through a trial, uh, in our municipal court. So what I'm going to do is look at the cost analysis for both of those and then I'm gonna bring those back to you all so you can see what that is. I'm not gonna ask you all to choose between those. Um, and then also I just want to let you know, when I spoke with Judge Miller, I asked her, you know, like, do you have trials on, um, like driving without a license or driving suspended license? And she said, yes, which I was really surprised. But then after she told me the reason why I wasn't, the reason, she said, the reason why she believes that she has seen trials and they're, they're not many, but she does, she has had them. She believes the reason why she sees them is because they are pro se, meaning that they're representing themselves. So they don't know. Um, if they would have had an attorney advise them on like, this is the reason why your license is suspended, then she believes that they probably would not have asked for a trial. So. Uh, and so let me circle back to Councilmember Crosley's, uh, last question under the Muni Court in general. That number two, I think a cost analysis is desperately needed. When can we anticipate receiving this? I am, my goal will be to have a cost analysis for you all at the second meeting. No, let me not do that. Let me give you the first meeting in February. What I'd also like to do is um, have Judge Miller also come and speak, uh, about municipal court and what, what she sees and what she thinks would be helpful to, to people that come before our court. And so if you all have any questions that you'd like to ask her, I'd love for y'all to have the opportunity to do so. But let me know, um, your thoughts on that as well. And, and let me just say that I, I spoke with Jody Miller about that as well, if she would be willing to, um, speak and answer any questions that you all had, and she said she would love to. So. Does that work for y'all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, ideologically it's a great idea, um, no doubt. Since it's part of everybody's right because you're innocent until proven guilty, but, uh, um, you know, we're a very, very small municipality, um, and, uh, uh, I mean, I'd like to make it work, but I think we have a tough road ahead of us for that, so.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. That's, that's why I want to give you a cost analysis for those two different options. So February, I think that gives, gives me, um, some good time, especially because we have holidays coming up. And if you'd like to hear from Judge Miller before February, um, just let me know. Would anyone like to hear from her before then? Yes.
It might be good to hear from her sooner and later because we might have, something might pop up that we want to figure back into the cost analysis.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, let me, let me reach out to Brandy and see if she has availability, uh, in December for our December meeting.
Yeah, and I would agree. I just, just for record, I, I'm sort of where Sean is on this. I, I think sort of ideologically, it's a mini brainer. It's all, it's a lot of details and moving parts to figure out and there's a lot of if thens and in terms of the cost, I think this would be really interesting to try to get an accurate picture of that.
Right.
But I'm just, and generally in favor of the idea, if we can make it work.
Okay. Alright. Any additional questions or discussion? Alright, thank you all. I appreciate you, um, entertaining this topic, discussing this topic and wanting to find a way to help people that appear before our court in Maplewood. It's really cool. So if there is, uh, no more discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No motion carries. Thank you. We are adjourned. I'll see you all at seven thirty.
Thanks. See ya.